Okay, let's reconvene our open session. We'll start with a report out from closed session. Trustee Lang.
Yes, there was one report out from closed session. On a six to zero vote with trustee Wright absent, the board approved a general intermittent leave without pay for March 1st to June 1st, 2016, to a part-time classified employee at Saddleback College.
Thank you. So, please rise for the invocation delivered by me and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to be delivered by trustee Lang.
We have a wonderful community college district with two fabulous colleges and a budding workforce development campus that makes our district one of the crown jewels of California's community college system. While our focus must remain on providing world-class education to students, a major part of our responsibility is to keep our students and campus community safe. To do this requires support and cooperation from the board, administration, first responders, police and firefighters, faculty, staff, students, and others. In a few moments, we will hear a presentation on the serious issue of active shooter preparations and training within our community college district. As many of you know, over the weekend in Kalamazoo, Michigan, we were reminded once again that senseless and tragic violence can occur at any place or at any time. So I ask that you join with me in taking a moment of silence to honor those victims and their families of the tragic shootings in Kalamazoo.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Please join me as we salute the flag to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two requests for public comment this evening, and I'd like to ask Doug Barr to come forward. Just a reminder that we allow, we allocate two minutes for public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, chancellor, college presidents. I invite all of you, if you haven't spotted it yet, there's an easel and a poster in front of the elevator outside commemorating the 25th anniversary of the college. This is meant as both a tribute to Jack Swartzbaugh, who we lost last month, as well as a fund venture in supporting something near and dear to Jack Swartzbaugh. That's the history of Saddleback College. I want to acknowledge previous efforts along the lines of taking care of the college history, including quite some time ago, Professor Lynn Wells of Fine Arts and Communication. While she was working and after she retired, she helped maintain some of the history. And most recently, Professor Anna Marie Kobos, one of our librarians, who with the encouragement of Todd Burnett, took on Saddleback College history as part of her sabbatical project. My own personal interest in the history has extended for some time, but it was recently highlighted by the passing of Jack in noting that many of our original faculty members who'd been with the college for some time, including Bill Jay, Dick Stutz, and many others, that they're slipping away from us and that I feel like we have an obligation to do what we can to capture the history while it's still among us. The Swartzbaugh family, as a tribute to Jack's love and commitment to Saddleback College, has created the Jack Swartzbaugh History of Saddleback College Project to support this effort. I conclude with a continuing invitation for everybody to join in this effort, including, you can stop by that poster, we've got most everybody identified on it, but there's still a lot of people, we can't quite figure out who it is. Perhaps it's because some of us have changed significantly since 1993. But on the other hand, even if you weren't here in 93, you may still recognize people that you know from your Saddleback history. And so I think I invite you to have fun with this, and with all due respect, we've got a lot more work to do in terms of gathering of the college history. And for those of, a little inside joke, for those of you that thought you might be getting kumquats because I was up here tonight, I'm sorry to disappoint you.
We are disappointed, Doug, but thank you. I'd like to ask Dr. Peter Espinosa, please come forward.
Evening, members of the board. My grandson, my precocious grandson is with the Harlem Globetrotters right now, and he wondered why I didn't go along with him, and I said, "I'm going to a board meeting." And he goes, "Why would you go to a board meeting?" And I said, "That's because important decisions are made, and so that's where I'm going." So he still doesn't get it, but here I am, just to give you a brief statement, I'm pleased to be here. On June 1977, I was hired at Saddleback College as a classified employee, which I have very fond memories of. At that time, I was involved in directing the OPS program. I was the initial founder of that program and initial manager. Six years later, I was assigned as an assistant to the chancellor for the district, and later I joined the counseling staff at Saddleback College where I completed my career. I've been a professor emeritus for four and a half years now, it's been a good four and a half years, very active. My career at Saddleback College was very challenging, extremely fulfilling, and I take pride in having a long tradition of giving back to my community. I'm here this evening to announce my campaign bid for trustee area three for South Orange County Community College District. I'm a former trustee from Capistrone Unified School District. I'm currently on the board for Reciprocal Media, which produces educational documentaries, and I'm currently an adjunct professor at Cal State University of Fullerton. I look forward to competing for an opportunity to serve South Orange County Community College District, and the challenge of a campaign is clearly a worthwhile endeavor. Thank you for opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other public, any requests to speak? Okay, we'll move on now to board reports, and let's start with trustee Prendergast.
All right. So I will leave a discussion of the Effective Trustee Conference that we attended to the newer trustees, who I assume had a good informative sessions while they were there. Tried to mentor them and show them what I knew, which wasn't very much. Went to the Pathways Conference in San Antonio with representatives from Irvine Valley College. Just leave it as, as we get more details about what that is and what their plans are. Having attended, I can fill you guys in if you have any questions about it. Then the next day we got back, went to the two plus two plus one accounting pathway with IVC and Cal State Fullerton, which allows for students to start at IVC, a direct set of classes. If they maintain a GPA, they get automatic acceptance into the Cal State Fullerton Accounting Program for two years, guaranteed classes as long as they maintain the GPA. If they do that, they're guaranteed acceptance into the master's program without having to take the GMAT, which then puts them on the path to CPA. So it's an amazing opportunity that I would hope a number of people take advantage of. Attended the President's Cup. Good news, bad news, Saddleback College men continued an amazing winning streak, but then they lost a cup because the IVC women won their game by a higher margin. Attended this week, an event put on by Congresswoman Mimi Walters in Tustin about safety and directly relates with the presentation we're going to get tonight, so the cooperation with the Tustin, city of Tustin and so forth. And then last, just a plug for myself, speaking of running for things, thank you for nominating me last, last month. My understanding is the boards will vote for candidates in their March meetings, including ours. So if you know anybody in other, in other boards, please, please, please give them a call and tell them to vote for me. And then lastly, just want to thank you for the outpouring of concern that people had after the last meeting. My daughter's fine. It was officially diagnosed as a weird panicky thing by the doctor, so everything's good. Thank you.
Thank you, that's really good news about your daughter, TJ. Trustee Jay.
I attended the--
Mike.
Mike. I attended the Effective Trustee Workshop put on by the Community College League of California in Sacramento. This was an excellent conference, learned a lot, and it was wonderful for new trustees and really good for all trustees. I also attended the IVC Foundation Board of Governors at IVC. That was on February the 9th. And then on February the 19th, this last Friday, I attended a night in historic Motown put on by the Angels of the Arts. Okay.
That's it? Great, thank you. So for my report, there are three things. One is the, I attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition's Economic Forecast hosted here at Saddleback College. It was a terrific event, both in terms of the organization of the event and the presentation of the data by Dean Tony Tang, extremely well-attended by various leaders in the community, business leaders, elected officials, and surpassed, I think, the presentation from last year, both in terms of the organization of the event and I think the content and the data presented. So Todd, good job, great job to Saddleback College and the work they did in putting on that event. Appeared on Laguna Woods Channel 6, had a different moderator interviewer this time, they're having some changes over there at Laguna Woods, so it's a different kind of place now, similar but different. And then had an opportunity to be with the team IVC the other night at the Orange County Business Council's annual dinner with Dr. Rockmore and his wife and Diane Oaks, and enjoyed spending the evening with you guys. Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Well, I seem to be running into trustee Prendergast at some of the outside activities that I've been involved with. I also attended the basketball game, very enjoyable entertainment, and kudos to all our student athletes and scholars, for that matter. Also, just prior to this meeting, trustee Prendergast and I, who serve on the audit committee along with trustee Wright, attended a meeting with the financial folks from the district, as well as our outside auditing team for this year, and, you know, went over the plan for the current year, tried to identify any issues that may be out there, went through the timing, also both the foundations and their directors and financial folks were there as well. Good meeting, I think we've got a good plan for the current year, and again, kudos to the financial folks in our district who just do an absolutely stellar job. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchek.
Hello, as is our custom, I'm going to talk about all the, a number of the things I attended since the last board of trustee meeting in our district. Number one, I attended Jack Swartzbaugh's funeral, and he was one of the original founders, the administrators of Saddleback College. And so many of the former professors and administrators were at the funeral. It was really, it was very sad because he passed away, but it was a wonderful event. And I think Doug Barr is active in making sure that there's a, in his memory, there's going to be a History of Saddleback College Project, which I will, I promise I'm going to donate to, I haven't done it yet. So, and there's also several products, several projects about the history of Saddleback College going on simultaneously. And it's a worthy project because Saddleback College is a wonderful college, and it's really a good thing to make sure that the history is maintained. The only other college I know that's anywhere close to as good as Saddleback College is Irvine Valley College. I also attended the Orange County-- I think they're both wonderful colleges, that was a joke, okay? The Orange County, the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force Meeting was interesting also, I'm their representative, and I went with Terry Flugman and the chancellor. We talked about, there's a proposal on the November ballot to extend the income tax portion at Prop 30, and the signatures are due by mid-May, and there are at least 1,000 higher ed bills that were introduced last week in Sacramento, so it's a lot to keep track of, and we'll try to keep track of them for you. I also attended the Saddleback College Lecture Series, Science Lecture Series, with Dr. Jennifer Pruschl. It was very interesting. She's a chemist at ECI and talked about how she's labeling many of the molecules with the same products that they use to actually, ladybugs used to light up with, so they actually fluoresce. And they're able to find many of the immunoglobulins and see them by doing that method, and it's really fascinating. She was a very good speaker. Then I also attended the Economic Forecast luncheon, where just by all the elected officials in Orange County were there, and I think I knew all of them, so it was a really fun thing to go to, and they did a great job. And I attended the Saddleback College Motown Event, where they talked about the history of Motown, African-American history, they had some great music, and then at the after-party, we danced for the whole hour, so we had a great time. And I did a lot more, but that's all I'm talking to right now, talking about right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. I can echo many of the comments that were said, but I brought my props tonight, and one of the great events that I went to was the economic, or the Effective Trustee, excuse me, workshop, and it was, it was really a growing experience for me. Having been here as faculty for 37 years, a lot of what they said, I thought, wow, I know that, or I know that, but the legislative policy initiatives, that was a lot. And I'm just overwhelmed when I talked at the different evening sessions that we had, the networking was great, but what you, and those of you who have been on the board a long time, what you must know on this board is absolutely astonishing. And I've just gained a greater respect for my position. And I really have to say, the only negative about that whole weekend was that I wasn't here for Jack's funeral. And I felt that I grew up here on Saddleback with Jack and also in my church, and I will always miss him. And then I went to the Economic Report, this was outrageously good. Thank you very much for putting this on. This was the South Orange County Economic Coalition, and we hosted it here at Saddleback. As a matter of fact, I took pictures as the slides went up, and I actually shared them with several of my colleagues and people at other schools, just to find out what the economic status is here in South County. And I also went to Motown. I am a Motown girl, and I've gone to everything that has to do with Motown, even to Vegas, I don't like going there, but if it's Motown, I'll go. And it really was wonderful that we hosted that. And it's sad that we only did it for one night, because it should be repeated and repeated. What I really liked were the people in the audience. They really rocked, and it was an enjoyable evening. Done.
Thank you. Having grown up in Motown, I'm sorry that I missed the event, hopefully they'll be able to repeat it. Chancellor's report.
Okay, as trustee Jamal mentioned in the beginning--
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
My bad. My apologies. Student trustee Mamon. Maya culpa.
Good evening, everyone. This last month, I was able to attend a very interesting Fibonacci sequence show put on by the dance department. Our very own academic senate president, Blake Stevens, was there presenting, he was part of the show. I was also able to attend a teach-in on Islam that President Burnett invited all of us to, actually. It was very interesting, and I'm proud to see our college taking such an active part in helping our community become more understanding of each other. And I was also able to attend an IVC meeting and see the wonderful things that they're doing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. It won't happen again. Chancellor's report.
Okay. Trustee Jamal mentioned in his earlier comments that we were having a report tonight on active shooter preparations. It was a report that was requested by trustee Witt, and they're going to, the police officers, the police chiefs are going to be talking about the preparations that they've made, what their plans are. I would give one caution, and that's that because this is highly sensitive information, that they're not going to go into some of the details that could possibly be helpful to a potential shooter that may happen to know about this presentation or see it on a video. So you may find some things missing, but there's a reason for it. I don't think it'll be too much of a problem. I also wanted to mention that on March 22nd, we're going to, the district services area, which is about 95 people, for the first time are having a day-long professional development session that is for everyone. There's never been such a meeting since I've worked here, and we're going to be spending our day primarily on professional development about how do we provide better services to the colleges? And so the focus will be on that all day long, so we're looking forward to that very much.
Thank you. College presidents' report, is one doing two now?
Actually, we're going to do two.
You're back to dividing it.
Yes, we'll trade back.
Okay.
But thank you, President Jamal. Tonight, the presidents are going to talk a little bit about our construction projects, because all of you get little snapshots having to do with the financials and different kinds of change orders and things like that, but nothing really big on the buildings themselves. So first of all, is our liberal arts building, formerly known as A400, and presently known as either the glacier, the iceberg, or the pincushion. You may recognize it as that large white plastic-covered building, which has now been removed, and so, not the building, but the plastic. And so the building underneath looks brand-new, has all of the outside coverings on it, the windows are in, and we're starting to do the landscaping, and so I can tell that because of the micro tremors that go on throughout the day there. But we hope to be in in the fall, and so perhaps in early fall, we'll have a dedication ceremony of some sort, and we'll be ready to show it off. The other is the Student Health Center, that has also athletics concession and restrooms attached to it. Seems like an odd collection, but when you think about it, where it's located and the purposes, it works out just fine. And so the opening of that, actually the beginning of that, is still pending, as they're just finishing the construction drawings. This building will be, it's on our master plan, it'll be out by our baseball field. Currently, there are no restrooms serving our athletes out there. The other is Bronca Road, which I think I've personally been working on for about 18 years, is ready to finalize the drawings, and hopefully somewhere around early 2017, we'll have students coming in and off the campus on that. It's going to be a great emergency kind of road for us, as well as other things. Moving on quickly, parking lot we badly need, we know we have a dirt lot that's heavily impacted, so it's time to get another lot put in. And then finally, our ATEP building, I see I've run out of time, but we're looking at a November groundbreaking, and I understand we're going to have a presentation to the board soon, you'll get a chance to see it, it's spectacular.
Thank you. President Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like Dr. Rockmore said, we're going to talk about major construction and renovation projects, and like IVC, Saddleback has many projects happening. As you all know, the Science Building, of course, will be finished this semester, will be moving in over the summer, and classes will start in the fall, and of course, the grand opening, mark your calendars, September 29th. Second, we, over the winter break, all of our faculty and staff and programs moved out of our advanced, I'm sorry, our Technology and Applied Science Building, and they moved down to the Village, as well as our AutoTech facility, moved into a brand-new facility that after they vacate and go back to tasks, it will become the permanent maintenance and facilities yard facility. So anyway, so that renovation project is underway right now. The third, you've heard a lot about, is our, probably one of the biggest projects that Saddleback will do, maybe in its history, and that's Athletic Stadium, Practice Fields, Parking, Stormwater, and Quad Renovation Project. In fact, we are just right now in the process of interviewing design-build contractors, working with district services, and hope to have a contractor picked, I believe by summer, so we can get going on that. But very exciting project. Next, after that, we have several large projects that we're trying to move to the next stage. You've heard a lot about our Gateway Building, which will be for the new student services right out here, the renovation of Mass Science and Engineering Building, and then finally, our Center for Innovation in Healthcare Education at ATEP. All of these projects truly are going to transform Saddleback College, and we're trying heavily and quickly to get them done before our 50th anniversary in 2018. And we appreciate the support of you, our district services, and all of our college staff to make that happen.
Thank you. Todd. Associated Student Government, Saddleback College.
Thank you. The first thing--
John, William.
Well, I'm William's evil twin, so--
[laughing]
The first thing that we've been working on in ASG, or the most recent thing, is the Elections Committee. Elections are coming up, and we're trying to maximize the voting turnout by setting for the plan that we can make that happen, basically. We're also having a blood drive this week, the 24th and the 25th, and I welcome all of you who wish to save a life to go and donate some blood. We also set in place a so-called mentorship program for international students, where we try to basically pair up new international students with current students at Saddleback. By doing that, we hope to facilitate the transition from other countries to the United States and also to college. We receive the news that Wi-Fi won't be upgraded until next year, next February. That news was received with a lot of disappointment, so to say, because we've been promised that it would be put in place this February, basically. Now we have to wait another year, and students, they really need the Wi-Fi. I mean, they can't use their computers in common areas, in some of the buildings, Wi-Fi is not working properly. So that was disappointing. We also are working on branding ASG, because a lot of students, they don't know about ASG, they don't know about the ASP stamp that we have, that we provide for students that wish to receive discounts, so to say. And lastly, we're going to have a ping-pong tournament on March 1st, where we wish to boost student involvement. And so if anyone wishes to lose in ping-pong, I challenge you to play me.
That's a pretty brazen comment at the end there. Thank you for your report. Irvine Valley College.
All right, so to begin with, I don't have an evil twin, even though that would be nice, so. Mid-year selections, we did in the beginning of February, we added 25 additional students. So we have, I think, 102 members under ASG now, so it's kind of like in the triple digits, which is a lot of people. But it's great, I mean, we have an amazing team, especially after, we also did a retreat February 5th to 7th, we had 82 students come up and show up, and we divided everyone individually in their own committees, so such as like budget, finance, we had constitution and bylaw review, we had program planning for the next, for spring semester, we had, literally like everyone was doing something. It was, it was a working retreat, and everyone got to know each other, and feedback was amazing, everyone loved it. Elections are also coming up, so we are holding elections. This year, we do get to do the student trustee, so it would be in our bowl game. We have over 40, we have around, I think, 41 positions available, and the applications are due Friday, February 26th, so it's this Friday. Also, we did do a couple of events recently, we had a Mardi Gras celebration on Tuesday, February 9th, and we also had over 250 IVC students come in attendance to watch the IVC President's Cup, and I think all the trustee members that did show up. I heard it was a great turnout, I had work, so I couldn't, unfortunately. Also, finally, the ASG Diversity Committee is, have been planning a multicultural Asian celebration, they've also been planning a Black History Month, and they're doing something special also for Persian New Year. So we've got a lot of stuff going on, and hopefully the semester goes well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on to discussion items, have a report from Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. I'm sorry, any board requests for reports? Caught myself that time.
5.6.
We're not quite there yet, but noted for--
Okay.
Consent calendar right now. Do you have any board requests for reports? Nope? Okay. Now, moving on to discussion items, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College-- Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, active shooter preparations and training. And I think this was a report requested by trustee Witt.
Really quickly, I want to introduce the individuals at Saddleback that are actually responsible for leading the emergency preparedness effort. And we have our Operations Lieutenant Mike Betzler, who's not here tonight, but I want to kind of give you a background so you can get the context of the experience. So he's a 30-year veteran of the Sheriff's Department. He was in charge of SWAT, helicopters, bomb squad, Orange County Transportation Authority, Harbor Patrol, and the Intelligence Assessment Center. He was an undercover narcotics officer, a Bureau Commander with the Department of Homeland Security, and before he retired, the Police Chief of the City of San Juan Capistrano. And since he retired, he's also organized the Internal Security at the Georgia Stadium. So that's our lieutenant, Mike Betzler. And here we have our chief, Pat Heger. And he is also a 20-year, 28-year veteran of the Sheriff's Department. He was on patrol and sergeant in the local community in Mission Viejo and Lake Forest, so is very familiar with our community. He was an investigator that worked in internal affairs, sex crimes, and undercover narcotics. And right before his retirement, he was also a chief of police, but in the city of Lake Forest. So with that, he is Chief Heger.
President Jamal and trustees, thank you very much for the opportunity, for letting us present our preparations for an active shooter mass casualty event. One of the most dangerous incidents that could occur on any campus is an active shooter or mass casualty event. This presentation will show what we are currently, what we currently have in place, what we are doing to prevent an incident, and what type of training we are providing the college community to deal with the active mass casualty shooter event. Start off with infrastructure. If an active shooter event were to happen, the best and quickest way to minimize the violence is to neutralize the threat as quickly as possible. This is the best way to save lives. Officers are trained on properly responding to threats to stop the violence. They're also equipped with the most updated protection, equipment, and technology. Patrol vehicles have been updated with radio communications, and soon we'll have onboard computers. Quick communications with the OC sheriffs and OC Fire Authority with encrypted radios has also been accomplished. An important component assisting the officer is the trained dispatcher. Working in a modernized dispatch center, the dispatcher has immediate access to criminal databases and also has instant communication with OC sheriffs and Fire Authority. The dispatchers are the eyes and ears for the officer. In the dispatch center are video monitors which allow dispatchers to quickly check large areas, provide valuable intelligence to the responding officer. The three-pitcher slide shows an officer engaging the suspect shooter during the training scenario. The suspect runs around the corner, out of sight of the officer. As the officer advances onto suspect, he is given information by the dispatcher. She can see the suspect from another camera feed, changing his clothes, concealing his handgun in his waistband. The subject is also walking back pretending to be a victim, and the officer can prepare and neutralize the shooter before the shooter can execute his plan, catching him by surprise. The building's security is an integral part of the overall safety plan for the college. Saddleback College has established a college-wide standard for implementing access control with integration of safety cameras. Access control is incorporated in all new building construction and remodel projects. Existing buildings will also retrofit, will be also retrofitted with this standard. This will provide the ability to immediately lock down campus doors remotely. Prevention. The National Threat Assessment Center considers identifying concerning behaviors, encourage reporting, and identifying appropriate interventions as important mitigating strategies for targeted violence incidents. Saddleback College has undertaken several programs to achieve these strategies. Referrals for student discipline and/or support is being captured and tracked with the use of the Advocate Report System. This dual system of addressing disciplinary issue and student support or care support is made available to faculty, staff, and students. The Crisis Intervention Team, CIT, is used to provide support for college community and perform threat assessments. This multidisciplinary team identifies behavior concerns and provides intervention solutions for the subject. The Student Health Center is an integral part of the prevention program. They are actively involved and provide the needed resources for assessment and intervention. An intervention solution is the Cognito At-Risk for Students Program. This interactive avatar program assists students with recognizing their own need for counseling service, and they learn where to go for help if they feel the problem is larger than they can handle. There is also an anonymous reporting option for students or staff, faculty. It's called the Silent Witness Program. It's available on the college police website. This allows anybody to report any incident with confidentiality. Orange County's largest threat assessment resource is the Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, or OCAAC. Thirteen local, state, and federal agencies combined to make up this task force. Two Saddleback police officers participate as terrorism liaison officers, or TLOs, and interact with OCAAC for sharing of information. Threat assessment information is for terrorism cases and for any threat to governmental agencies or to the public. As part of the Department of Homeland Security, information is gathered and shared across the nation through OCAAC. Ongoing training and materials. Training is a never-ending task. It is part of the cycle of planning, preparation, and practicing. For the last two years, Saddleback College Police Department has been training with the Orange County Sheriff's Department for various emergency situations. We've conducted an active shooter exercise with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and OC Fire Authority at the Student Services Center back in 2014. We use students with simulated injuries makeup. Another active shooter exercise was conducted at the Mission Viejo Mall right across the street with OC sheriffs and Fire Authority using sheriff's reserve personnel acting as shoppers. The introduction of providing forced protection to OC Fire Authority personnel as they move into warm zone to set up casualty collection points, this enables them to provide closer and quicker triage capabilities. The training was provided, has provided Saddleback College police officers with the ability to integrate with OC Fire, OC sheriffs during an active shooter incident utilizing communications, search techniques, and common tactics. For active shooter incidents, quick response time by OC sheriffs will be critical. Familiarity of the campus translates to quicker response times for sheriff's personnel and more efficient integration with college police personnel. There's been an increase in training with OC sheriffs on Saddleback campus to include K-9, hazardous device squads, SWAT, and large-scale training for mobile field force. OC sheriffs will be increasing training at Saddleback College for the next five years. The training will include Saddleback officers training alongside sheriff's personnel. OC sheriffs also included some of our officers in a local indoor laser training center for active shooter incidents. We've been attending briefings at both sheriff patrol stations, Saddleback Station at Elisa Viejo, where maps, terrain features, and high-density areas were explained to the patrol deputies and sergeants. This will be repeated periodically throughout the year. Saddleback College developed a series of safety videos to provide pertinent information on a variety of safety and emergency topics. As it pertains to active shooter topics, videos include distress indicators, threatening students, an active shooter, and resources on campus. Each video was created to be short in duration to keep the attention of the viewer, but provides valuable information on each topic. The videos are readily available on the Saddleback Police website and will become mandatory viewing for all employees. In addition to safety, excuse me, in addition to safety videos, emergency guide folders were distributed to faculty and staff. The folders contain emergency preparation information, reference phone numbers, links, assisting students in crisis, and recognizing behaviors. The College Emergency Response Team, CERT, is currently undergoing changes with an increase in recruitment and training plan for the upcoming year. Another three-day basic training class is scheduled with quarterly training classes. We are encouraging staff and faculty to participate since they are subject matter experts in both the physical makeup of the campus and can provide best practices for a quicker recovery of the college. The campus police will regularly attend the various senate meetings to provide information on safety issues and to seek input from governance groups, so the entire college community can move forward and prepare as a team for all emergency situations. One of the presentations we've been doing over the Professional Development Week and at some of the staff meetings, department and division staff meetings, is the active shooter video. And here is the video.
There are several important things to know should you find yourself in the vicinity of an active shooter here on campus. If you hear gunfire, take cover immediately and assess the situation. This is always your first course of action. Your first reaction may be to run, but if you don't know the location of the shooter, you risk running closer to danger instead of away. If you're trapped with no exit route, or you're unsure of the shooter's location, hide. And only as a last option, fight. Run, hide, fight. Remember that.
If you're outdoors during a shooter event, take cover behind a tree and assess the situation. Should you be in a parking lot, get down behind the engine area of a vehicle, near the front wheel well. The metal is very thick and offers the most protection from gunfire. Formulate a plan, and once you have an escape route clear, run for it.
If it is not safe to run, hide yourself well. Close and lock any doors between you and the shooter. Barricade yourself in if you have to, and turn off the lights so you'll be harder to see.
As soon as you're in a safe position, call campus police immediately at extension 4444 from any campus phone, or use your cell phone to dial 911. Be prepared to give five pieces of information. Your name, location, describe the shooter's clothing, describe where the shooter was or where he might be heading, and any injuries you or those around you may have sustained.
After contacting the authorities, turn off your phone, or put it in vibrate mode at the very least. It's important to keep your phone absolutely silent. The last thing you want to do is to draw any unnecessary attention to yourself. Once informed, campus police will immediately respond and notify local emergency first responders. If you're wounded, stay calm and apply pressure to slow down the bleeding. When you hear the police searching your area, call out for help.
Help us!
Run, hide, fight. Only attack the shooter as a last resort.
Assess the situation. Run, hide, fight. Remember these simple strategies and keep calm. It could make all the difference in the world.
Okay. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Should we wait until after?
Absolutely.
Chief Glenn's presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening and talk about active shooter preparation at Irvine Valley College. Our primary focus in preparing our students, faculty, and staff is to make sure that they have an answer, response, to a situation they may unexpectedly caught in. There's no way we can prepare or prevent, I should say, active shooter situations, but the best tool that we can have is training our students, staff, faculty how to respond if they happen to be in an unfortunate situation of being involved in an active shooter situation. We've taken the four questions that trustee Witt has presented and put them in such a fashion that we hope we'll be able to cover the different aspects that you've asked be presented tonight. The first is simulation exercises. We feel that everything that we do culminates in how we're going to respond from the law enforcement perspective. We've worked and exercised with Irvine Police Department and the Orange County Sheriff's Department in how we respond to these kinds of incidences. Particularly with the Irvine Police Department, we've had active shooter movement training where you enter various buildings and actually move in teams and through different scenarios with suspects to simulate what you would do in an active shooter situation. We've also trained with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, Irvine PD, and Tustin PD in dealing with a hostage situation. In an active shooter situation, that can migrate to a hostage situation whereby after the shooting is started, it may stop and you may even have a hostage situation. We actually involved the Orange County Sheriff's Department Bomb Squad, the Tustin-Irvine SWAT Team, the Irvine Police Department and their hostage negotiations team, and addressed a simulation whereby a child's parent was, who did not have custody rights, attempted to get the child, but it worked out well. It gave us a chance to practice our various different protocols, including our communications equipment that we deal with and use there. We've also used the former A400 building before it was renovated to practice door breaching, that is, actually forcing doors open. We use that same building for the Sheriff's Department to practice their tactics, the bomb squad, and trying to blow open doors. They were controlled explosives, which were safe, but what it did is gave our training partners, our law enforcement allies, an opportunity to train in real scenarios which they don't normally get in those practices. Part of all of this is our plans, and those plans are outlined in our Active Shooter Response Emergency Operations Plan, or Active Shooter Support Plan, I should say. We also have the active shooter protocols, which we have on our website, that also instruct staff, faculty, students what to do in an active shooter situation. And that same website, we have videos that help instruct them as well what they do in those situations. Part of our training also has to do with behavioral intervention, where we train individuals, our law enforcement officers, as well as campus community, how to recognize certain behavioral indications, actions that might indicate whether or not that person could be a potential threat, whether it's active shooter or something else. For our faculty and staff training, Flex Week was a great opportunity to address our faculty particularly. We had an expert in emergency management, a gentleman from the Los Angeles Police Department Emergency Operations Training and Exercise Bureau, who addressed a house full of faculty members in BISTEC 101, and talked specifically about how and what we needed to do to be prepared for any kind of scenario, whether it's an active shooter or otherwise. We are planning on contracting that individual to help us develop advanced plans to deal with these kinds of emergency situations. We've also developed a behavioral intervention team, and we call it the BIT Team. And what that team does, it reviews reports of disruptive individuals, reports of unusual circumstances involving individuals, to try to assess whether or not that person could be a potential threat to our college. And we found that it's very successful in trying to identify and having an opportunity to intervene before something could develop or happen from that situation. Inside IVC, we have a number of training videos. Those training videos cover managing disturbed or disruptive students, active shooter response. And we also have in that as well, the video Run, Hide, or Fight. And we saw a vignette of that that Saddleback has, which is very, very good. Some of the additional staff, faculty, training that we have actually is outlined in the emergency preparedness website at our police department's website. And there's a page which lists several different items that you can use as a resource for that. That resource also is available for students as well. The Student Health Center is preparing an emergency medical triage capability, which is really great for us to ensure that any victims of an emergency, whether it's an active shooter situation or something else, can have immediate medical first aid, which is a lifesaver. That is critical in an active shooter type situation. Some of the tactics that are being used nowadays, when we address or approach an active shooter situation, it's typically addressed with, and I'll use the acronym, LI, where we locate, isolate, and eliminate the threat. You don't really focus so much on those that might be injured, but we do have to have a capability. They may be rescued by a follow-up, a second team that may come in. And so we do employ that, we do train with that as well. The Student Health Center is also developing protocols for post-traumatic stress counseling afterwards. I think that that should be something that should be in place in the next couple of months. Nancy Montgomery's been doing a fantastic job there. Some of the training that we currently have in progress, we've had, we had six different presentations of the Run, Hide, Fight video along with the presentation of details and instruction with scenarios provided. In our PAC during December, we also had another presentation similar at the ATEP campus as well to make sure that those staff members over there have the same level of training and preparedness that we have for the IVC main campus. Our Active Shooter Response and Disruptive Managing Disruptive Management Our Active Shooter Response and Disruptive, Managing Disruptive Students presentations are being played there as well, so we provide broad training to those staff as well. And we also have additional information, again, on our website that you can refer to, and it provides background on what we're doing. Projects currently underway, we're installing Code Blue phones. I'm not sure if you're familiar with those, blue towers, they're about seven, eight feet tall. And what they do is they have a blue light on those. Those will be stationed throughout the campus community. If someone has an emergency and need help, they can easily identify them by looking and viewing, because they will always be at a location where anywhere on campus you can see them. Once someone picks up that phone, it flashes blue. It helps that responding officer to come directly there. That call goes directly to our dispatcher or officer in the field when dispatchers aren't working. That's a very important project, which is just about ready to kick off in the next couple of weeks, in fact. Another is the Integrated Security Camera and Door Lock System. What we want to do is have the ability of dispatchers who receive a call of an incident to be able to not only have that alarm go off to tell it that there is an intrusion or some other problem, but to be able then look up the camera, and that camera will be then focused right at that location of where the problem is. Saddleback's doing the same thing. It's something that we are partnering with as well and paralleling each other with. I think they're both effective systems. We're also installing emergency manual door locks, a system so simple, it simply uses a plate that attaches to the door and slides down into a couple of holes in the ground. The, hard to explain, but it's very simple. It's something that anyone can use and operate. It's something I'd like to be able to demonstrate to you, and if you ever have an opportunity to go by A123, you can see it there where we have it demonstrating. Last, we're also adding window blinds on first-floor offices and classrooms to assist in a hide-run-run-hide-fight type situation. Obviously, you want to turn the lights off, you want to be able to conceal yourselves, and so I think window shades are important, take away light. And then lastly, we're developing and enhancing our Building Marshal Program and our CERT Program as well. Thank you. I guess we're ready for questions?
Thank you both. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, thank you very much. Like I said, I just happened to go to the event in Tustin, the Run, Hide, Fight. I like how Saddleback, you kind of created your own to show the environment here. It might be something IVC could consider as well. It certainly personalizes it for the area. I do have a question about preparation for students. It's not like, you know, in my high school, we can just call everyone in the gym and have an assembly. Can't really do that. How do we get the word out? I noticed you both talked about meeting with the governance group, so is there an expectation that they will get the word to the students? Or how do students find out what their options are?
We had great student participation in our PAC presentations. Those notices were posted on doors of every building on campus. That's how we attracted them.
We made sure we attended all the student orientation meetings at the beginning of the year. Our philosophy right now is we need to have, we're having our policy team well-versed in emergency situations, which goes to the faculty, which goes to staff also, and then the next group's going to be students, but we've been passing out flyers. We have it on our website. We try to direct all the students to our website to watch not only active shooter video, but all emergency videos that are in that packet. So our plan is to reach out to the ASG also, to make sure that we visit their meetings whenever they want us there with the Senate groups. We're getting regular attendance on that, just for safety issues and whatever they want to talk about, but we're trying to include everybody in this group, including students, obviously.
And just for the community's sake, the Run, Hide, Fight video is put out by the Department of Homeland Security. It's for anybody to watch. It's a really good way to kind of make yourself more aware that no matter where you are, kind of assess what's out there, where your escape routes are, where your hiding places can be, what tools are there in the room that could be used if necessary. And it's very well done, and again, I like the adaptation you guys developed for the local community, but it is available for everyone through that resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
Okay, thank you. It was excellent. I attended several of your workshops at the Professional Development Week and learned about this, and it was really fascinating. And I thank Trustee Witt for asking that this be put on our agenda, because it's certainly timely, and our staff has to know what to do and our students have to know what to do in these situations. One question I have is, who are our dispatchers? It seems like a dispatcher is like a key person. Is this a trained police officer? You know, they have to make these split-second decisions. That's my first question. Do you want me to ask all my questions first, or do you want to answer that one? You could answer that one, it's okay.
Okay. Both campuses, both police department hire dispatchers that are post-qualified. They have to go through training and pass the certification. They're non-sworn positions, but they, as you can tell, hold a vital role. They are the eyes and ears for our officers out in the field. They take in all the calls. They have to interpret what the call is and disseminate that information effectively out to the officers.
Yes.
And during emergency situations, that's our primary focus. They're trying to get the phone calls in, they're trying to dispatch personnel out there and get resources, so it gets busy back there, but that's why they have to be trained through the state, post-certified.
Okay, thank you. I know it's a position that they're sitting there by the phone, and they have to be well-trained, but not unless there's an emergency, is it really important that they're really good? So it's a tough, probably tough to get someone really good in that position. Also, as a student, I've gotten text messages when there's been emergencies on campus, like classes of closing. So that's, I think both colleges do that. Yes?
Currently, we're using Blackboard Connect for emergency notification messages. We have another method as well for internally at our classrooms themselves, and that is what we call InformaCast. InformaCast uses the telephones within the classroom to provide a digital message, as well as a voice message that comes over. The Blackboard Connect has five different ways that you can send messages to individuals. Text, SMS, it can send it via email, it can send it voice, you could have your personal cellphone, your home phone, or your office phone in that system. And once that message is sent out to either everyone in your campus, a small group of your campus, a building, or both campuses if necessary, it makes it, leaves this way to contact.
That's great, and I think our students probably use text messages primarily, more than any of the other messages from a personal interaction with the students. I've seen that. Also, I looked at both the websites, they were easy to find, the Saddleback College Police website and the Irvine Valley College Police website. And I was able to find the videos on the Irvine Valley College Police website, but I wasn't, are there videos on the Saddleback College Police website? Because I couldn't find them, I just looked through them right now.
Yes, ma'am, they're on the tab menus on the left. I think it's the second one.
No, excuse me, I did, I found the ones on the Saddleback College, excuse me, I'm going to correct that. I found the ones immediately on the Saddleback College website, but I couldn't find videos, if there are videos, on the Irvine Valley College website. And if there are, just let me know how to find them. Thank you. I found the police website, but not the videos.
On the column on the left-hand side, you'll see Emergency Preparedness. If you hit that tab, you'll go to a page, that's where you'll see Run, Hide, Fight. A second location is if you go to...
Thank you.
A second location...
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Oh, okay. A second location is inside IVC, which you have to log on, faculty, staff primarily. There, there are a couple of videos. One is active shooter. If you look under Employee and Training, you'll see Active Shooter and Managing Disruptive Students there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
For the sake of time, I will take the time and come and meet both of you, and I'll have my questions. All righty?
I just wanted to, I just had a comment. I want to thank the two of you for your excellent presentation today. Not only are you doing a fantastic job on our campuses, you also are pretty good presenters as well, so it's nice to see that kind of articulation at the board meeting, and thank you for what you do.
I ditto that.
Okay. We are now moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any polls?
5.4.
5.6.
Hold on a second. 5.6, Trustee Witt?
5.6.
Trustee Lang, I saw your... That's it?
5.4.
I got it. Okay. Hearing no other polls? Second. Motion by Trustee Lang to move the remainder of the items, and a second by Trustee Prendergast. So let's please cast your vote. Motion carries, unanimous, trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. So let's go back to item 5.4, student trustee Mamon.
Yes. I realize that this, this piece of, this item on the consent calendar is regarding the cafeteria and regarding an extension of the contract, and we have two options for two different years where we can extend that contract. And so far, it's been up, and this is our first year of an extension. I was wondering if we've had any proposals to find new contractors for our cafeterias?
Carol, Randy? Or I could even answer it. You want me? Carol, come on, it's your time. You're the one heading this project. Come on, Carol. We're excited to tell you, Lamar.
We had, when we went out for bid last time, we had a real challenge getting quotes, responses to our RFP. And we had several vendors come and tour the facility and say the reason they didn't respond is because the facilities are so old and a lot of the equipment is so old, that they're very limited as to what they can do in that particular space. So as a college, we decided that we would upgrade the space first, upgrade the equipment, the kitchen, and the environment, and then, once we've done that, we would go out and look for, you know, for improved services. And so right now, we're working on a contract, Deborah's nodding, it's with Deborah right now, to have, to start the preliminary plans for that, so.
Okay, what is that set out for? Like, what is that, when is the timeline for that, for the upgrading of the space?
Okay, well, we're looking at actually hiring the architect right now to start those preliminary plans.
Okay, and when do you think that you will be starting it?
Starting the actual remodel, you mean?
The, are you starting to make those plans? What do you project? Like, what day?
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, yeah. As soon as they get the contract signed, we can't do anything till then, we're going to start up meetings so that we'll have the stakeholders come and participate, which would absolutely include students.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Someone want to move the item? Motion by Trustee Lang.
Second.
Second by Trustee Witt. Please cast your vote. Motion carries, unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Okay, 5.6, and I think we have several trustees wanting to comment. Let's start with Trustee Witt.
Yes, I just wanted to ask about the safety in regards to the area which they are going to be going, and what, number one, what I was thinking, are we looking at the State Department's travel advisories right before we go? Is that in place? And also of the health, I understand that in reading all of this, that it has been looked at, and the virus is not in that specific area, the mosquito isn't, but is anything in place for a problem?
Todd, would you like to respond?
Do you want to start with your part, and then I can answer the other part?
I'll just start with my part. As far as the study abroad, it's, we do look at the advisories throughout the semester prior to students taking part in the study abroad. So that is taking place, and it's part of our natural procedure. About the safety, this is the second time that the professor is going to be taking the students on the trip, so they already did this previous time, so they sort of have that in place now, and I don't want to speak for that. I can let President Burnett speak to protocols they have in place.
Sure. Well, anticipation of these questions, because of the things that are happening, obviously, in Brazil and South America, the professors and the dean gave us a little bit of information. We actually have a printed sheet too, if you'd like to see that. I submitted it to the chancellor as well. But with that, just to let you know, the professors have obviously thought detailed about, as Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons mentioned, the professors have gone before and are very familiar with the country and the terrain. With that, just a little bit about the Zika virus, which is what you're really referring to, as you already noted, which I'm glad you knew, is that they are actually going to the southeastern portion of Brazil, and most of the outbreaks are more in the northeastern portion, so they are in an area that's less infected. The other thing that they're looking at is that they're not going until June, and by that point, they do expect that a large portion of the population will have immunity to the virus, as well as the winter season's going on right now, which will kill a lot of the virus. And then finally, they're having the government down there, and all the countries are doing a lot of control measures. In addition to that, the, the, both professors did say the biggest risk, as you know, first of all, going to any tropical environment is a risk anyway, no matter, even without the Zika virus. But with that, they are encouraging that students that are pregnant or expect to be pregnant, that they should not attend this particular trip. So those are a few things that they're doing, but as Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons mentioned, we'll be watching it very, very closely up until the time comes for them to leave.
I would also like to add that whenever students, faculty members are proposing the study abroad trip, they do sit down with myself and Maureen Oliver, who's the head of, the Director of Risk Management. And what we do is we sit down with the faculty member and make sure that they understand the protocols, as well as the student insurance that's required for each student to have, and make sure that the insurance is part of the trip, that students are purchasing it, and that it is the insurance that meets our requirements. So what part of that requirement is that they have a certain level of student travel insurance, that they are protected if they get injured or hurt or ill on the trip. It also provides other contingency plans in there so they can get evacuated out if they needed to, they can, if there's trip interruption, all those kind of things. So we do ensure that that stuff is in place, and so that, for the faculty members attending as well. So that does provide some added protection to the students.
Thank you. I think, Trustee Lang, you had some questions? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Trustee Milchker then.
Yeah, I was, actually, you know, they're telling women of childbearing age, certainly women that are planning to get pregnant in the next few years, not to travel to Brazil because of the high incidence of microcephaly, that people, that get, usually Zika virus is a very, very benign mild disease, but if it's a pregnant woman, it could be devastating to the child for the child's life, so, and the mother. So I think we should look at this really carefully before we determine if we should send students there. I'm not saying no now, but I'm saying we should really study the situation thoroughly first. Thank you.
Trustee Milchker, one thing you actually pointed to, you just said that, and to be aware, is that actually the risks and the health risks to other than pregnant women are as common as any other time going there at any time, so...
Not serious at all, no.
Yeah.
The only real serious, you know, could be any virus infestation.
That's right.
It's like a mild cold that lasts a week.
Right.
But the pregnant women, you know, there are pictures of the women with the microcephalic children, and it's devastating, so we don't want to go there, you know? So that's why we want to look into this very thoroughly. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no other questions? Did you have another comment? Trustee?
I have one more question. I'm just curious, what is the population, where are the students going? How many, and male, female?
I do not know that. We could give that for you. All I know is it's quote, "one of the richest regions."
Did you ask for the population of the region where they're going? Or the student body? So what they're doing is during this semester, the trip is actually going to be in June, and during this semester, the faculty members advertise for the study abroad trip, and then all the students start to sign up, and usually, a few months before the trip, they have the final roster.
Okay. I saw it was between 15 and 20. I was just curious if they have. Okay.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, anyone want to move the item? Well, I will move the item. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Lang. Okay, please cast your vote. We're missing, okay, so we have a five yes vote, trustee yes votes, one abstention, one trustee absent, and one student advisory yes vote, the item carries. Moving on, general action items, 6.1, the Orange County School Board Association, Mary and... Moving on, general action items, 6.1, the Orange County School Board Association Marion Bergerson Award nomination. Would we like to nominate any one of our colleagues on the board? Hearing? None? Is anyone interested in being nominated for the Marion Bergerson Award? Okay. So, I don't think we have any nominations. Moving on. 6.2, Board of Governors Classified Employee of the Year Award. Is someone gonna speak on this issue, or? Okay, motion by trustee Lang? Is there a second? Second by trustee Prendergast. Any discussion? No one's gonna speak in support of the nomination? Okay. Let's cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. Okay, 6.3, Saddleback, I mean fiscal year 2018 through 2019, five-year construction plan approval of the district's order of priorities.
Yes, this item is something that we bring to the Board of Trustees for your review at least once a year, and sometimes twice a year, depending on if there's any other revisions. And so in February, what we traditionally do is bring you the five-year construction plan order of priorities. And why it's important to bring to you in the month of February is that that starts, we're starting our planning and budgeting process in February, and the planning committees such as KIC are starting to confer and be, working on the recommendations for basic aid prior to BARC and the basic aid cycle sort of starting. In addition, it's required annually to have a state submittal, and that submittal takes place in June. And so it starts that process of making sure the priorities are firmed up, and then they're sometimes tweaked and refined in the month of May and brought to the board if we need to have any kind of tweaks to get more advantage for the district and the colleges for their state buildings, for states of middle. Brandy Delena, our executive director of facilities and planning, is going to be talking to you about the changes in the priorities for this particular board item. And she's coming.
Did you wanna hold your question?
Good evening, Board of Trustees. So the first thing you'll note is that on your exhibit, there are some items that are highlighted in yellow, and those are the changes from last year's submittal and what you approved last year. The first change is the addition of the fine arts HVAC upgrade and interior renovation. This was originally designed as a much smaller project. As it progressed through design, it became larger, and large enough to include on this listing for the state chancellor's office. So that's been added here. The next change that you see is that the quad landscape and the athletic stadium projects have moved up respectively from 23 and 13 to priorities eight and nine. The reason for that change is to group together the site improvement, the quad landscape, and the stadium project, all as one. As you heard Dr. Burnett describe earlier, all those projects are going together at one time, and they'll be improvements campus-wide when that project is under construction. And the next change that you see is a change from the B-300 renovation project of priority 24 to 15. That was increased as a result of the college's decision to increase the priority of that project. Just a couple minor switches on the next.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, please go, do ask.
What is the B-300 building again, please?
What is the B-300 building? It's in the B quad. You know, Dr. Rockmore might help us out there with the actual function of the building. I believe it's a computer building.
Okay.
Well, looking at this, actually, the 300 building is a music building. Are we referring?
That's A-300.
Oh, this is B.
Over in the sciences quad, yes.
Good, yeah, I missed that. Yeah, B-300 is a renovation. It's, it's where our learning assistance program is located, as well as the lower floor, which is largely physics and some fine arts. And so the upper floor will be vacated by moving over to the new liberal arts building. And so we need to repurpose that second floor.
Thank, thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Oh, no problem. Okay, so then the next one is just a switch between repair and remodel, the science math. It's, it's MSc at the state chancellor's office, which is why it reads here. However, at the district level, we call it the sciences math building, and the new ATEP building. And the reason we switched those priorities is to improve the standing for potential state funding on the sciences math building. So it's higher in the priority there, as you see it. And then finally, the A-200 building was dropped from position 11 to 25, and that was the switch with the B-300 building.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Prendergast.
So here we are four years later. It's an Olympic year. And I hear there's a pool available. Can I turn off the mic? Any, any investigation into that?
I haven't heard about the pool being available. As before, the, really, the best way for us to move forward, for me to move forward with projects is for them to be included in the education and facilities master planning process. And this, I've been dying to tell you this, this year is our education and facilities master planning process is gonna be underway. And so the colleges are responsible to let us know what those priorities are. First, we do an education review, ensure that the curriculum needs meet the student needs, meet the demographics, and so on. So that's part of the process, but the other part of the process is to get desired projects on that list. And right now, there is no pool on that list, so I'm really hoping that you and I together will lobby and get that pool on the IVC list, so that then we can take some action on it. Until then, it's not a project that's been identified as a priority, and therefore, resources aren't put toward it.
Okay, just saying, it's a lot cheaper than a stadium.
You obviously, well, hey, you obviously don't have enough sway in the district, I'm not sure. Okay, trustee Lang. Go ahead of me.
So I am trying to, I guess, understand the distinction between a repair, a renovation, and I forget, I think we had some other language for, similar language for that.
Maybe scheduled maintenance.
Yeah, perhaps. In terms of, I guess, following the spirit of what basic aid dollars are supposed to be used for. And so maybe somebody can help me with those distinctions? I noticed there aren't dollar figures that are indicated, at least on this schedule, that would perhaps be telling in understanding the extent of the, the projects that are involved.
Actually, one of your fellow trustees asked me for that information earlier today, President Jamal. And so I can share with you that the range of projects that are on this list range from 1.9 million, oh, I'm sorry, there is a $200,000 project on there, and that's on there as an obligation to the state. We've obligated that work to the state, and so we put it on the list to notify them that we're still planning to do that. However, it's much too small, really, for this list, other than to, to really denote that obligation. This list contains projects from 1.9 million to, let's see, the top project on it is 44 million, and a wide range in between. Maybe to be helpful with the renovation, repair, scheduled maintenance new, it would be helpful to talk a little bit about the distinction between district managed capital improvement projects and college managed capital improvement projects. The amount that we denote for college managed projects are a million or less, and greater than that would then be managed by the district level. Although, those that are managed at a million dollars at the college level are still considered renovation and repair projects, and do still pursue basic aid money. The way the BP and AR is written right now is that no projects would pursue basic aid funding less, it has to be, they have to be greater than 400,000. And that amount is under review annually, and we're part of that KIC process, and Deborah can speak to this probably better than I can as the, the chair to the committee. Part of that process is to analyze that every year and determine if 400 is the appropriate amount, or if it needs to be increased. I hope that helped.
A little bit, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Witt.
I noticed that you said that these projects are gonna be going on simultaneously, and I look at them, there's seven, five of them will be on Saddleback campus. Parking. I, when you have renovation, when you have repairs, when you have building, that always brings in more wheels. So have we looked at that?
Yes, we absolutely have. At the, at the persistent request of Carol Hilton, I'd like to acknowledge her as being the parking champion of Saddleback College. She's done a great job of bringing this to the forefront. And the stadium project, the site improvement project, the quad project, that includes a project to move the practice fields from where they are located to the area near the stadium, making them more adjacent to the athletic functions. And once they're moved over there, then the, the places that they have vacated are going to become new parking lots. And interesting, and, oh, hmm, sorry, I was just about to disclose some secrets that were presented to us in a recent presentation, and that's all still confidential. So we'll be sharing that another time, but it's looking really good, let me just put it that way, if you don't mind. Thank you.
I wanna hear the secret.
I can't tell secrets yet, it's confidential. We're in a selection process right now for the contractors and designers, and, and they presented us with their ideas to see if they were on track with what our expectations were. And boy, did they come with some really good ideas, so it's very exciting.
She's really teasing us.
Yeah, it's a tease.
So if I could just add, the what's before you is approval of the priority order, but not the funding. This is priorities only tonight. Funding comes with the basic aid recommendation in May.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Milchiker.
I, I, well, first of all, shut off the, the camera, so we could hear the secrets.
I know, I'm sorry.
But anyway, I, I discuss this with you. I'm, I'm talking about the task building, the technology and advanced science building at Saddleback College. Is that completely shut down now, and the whole staff is, is moved down to the village and lower campus?
They're in the swing space right now. And while that project is still a little ways off before we go out to construction bid on it, what we're doing right now is reviewing the documents to ensure that they're in good order for when we do go out to construction. So we have a construction manager on site right now, the DSA inspector, that is our resident inspector, the construction manager, the staff at Saddleback as well, are all looking at the documents to ensure their completeness now. As I say that, no set of construction documents is ever perfect, nor will it ever be. But we're gonna get closer to it as we're working on them.
Okay, thank you. That building does, as you know, it needs, needs help, and, and they're doing it now. And so are they, they're just renovating the building. They're, they're not going to change the building. They're just, you know, making sure that it's, will stand up and it won't fall apart with the shift of, in soils and all that.
Yes, you're exactly right. The soils have shifted under that building, and part of it is to shore the building up, which would mean putting in a new foundation. To do that, you have to, one has to jackhammer the slab out, and that means bringing it basically down to studs on this building. So you've seen renovations happen on buildings before that turn them into brand-new buildings, and that's kinda what's gonna be the end result of this building.
Like the BGS building, I guess?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I, I just have one question, so it's, probably no, it's coming. It's come to my attention that one of the priority projects on here, which the board is in support of, and I am in support of, the estimated cost far surpasses what was previously presented to us. And I'm referring to the athletic stadium. So I don't know if you are able to comment on that at this time.
Yes, absolutely, I am. So the process is, last year, when we came to you for the KIC request to assign dollars to a project, your approval for that process was an $18 million assignment to the stadium. That request stemmed from an original design that occurred with Saddleback. Saddleback had hired a consultant. The purpose of that, the hiring of that consultant was to raise money through the foundation. And so those numbers were used to ask you, the board, for monies toward the stadium. Those were assigned monies. We moved into the process. We hired a criteria architect. The criteria architect then met with, now, let me share with you that the foundation architect was really a very back-of-the-napkin kind of sketch. We want a stadium, we want, you know, some bleachers here, we want a press box, and it's gonna cost about this much. Those, those ideas then were taken to faculty and staff, and really with the criteria architect, fettered out the very intricate details that were necessary for the stadium. So now we have understandings of team practice rooms that are necessary. What exactly is needed in that press box? What will be required to meet ADA requirements? You know, they've gone in and they've done a survey on the property, and how do we make that whole stadium accessible to people when they come on site, and so on, and so on. In addition to that, you noted, I noted earlier, that the quad project and the site improvements projects has, they've all been added into one project. But the funding for the stadium itself is the one that has doubled from an $18 million project to a $36 million project after all those discoveries were made. And now, how, you would ask yourself, how is it possible to move forward on a project that was originally designed for 18 million and now is moving forward with a $36 million budget? And the process that we've used in the past, and the one that we're using now, is if a project is discovered to be over budget, then we go to the college and we say, we can do A or B. We can postpone that project until we can go through another funding cycle, the KIC cycle, and then go to the board and ask if they would be willing to fund additional dollars to the project. Or we can ask the college to commit to the additional funding. And after the college commits to the additional funding, then they also have the desire to go to KIC, that say, yes, no matter what, we wanna move this project forward. And I think you're all aware that the objective is the 50th anniversary and the football games during the 50th anniversary season. So the college has that as their objective. They've committed the additional $18 million to the project. They are also going to KIC and requesting that KIC relieve them of that obligation by assigning that 18 million dollars as a recommendation to the board when we come to you with the KIC recommendation in May-June. So that is how we were able to move forward.
Well, I like the back of the envelope number a little bit better.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
But obviously, that's not the way we move forward, and it's too bad it happened in that way.
What, if you don't mind my interrupting.
Please.
Lessons learned. It's really in construction a constant improvement opportunity with all of the things that we learn as we move forward. One of the things that we and the college have discovered through a couple processes is how important it is to plan better first. So we are currently in the process of planning our projects. Before we go and ask for money, we're asking for planning money. An example of that would be the health sciences project that Dr. Rockmore discussed earlier. So last year, you assigned $400,000 to that project. We went, hired a designer, the designer identified the programming with faculty and staff, and then moved forward to identify the budget. And this year, you'll see a fairly solid budget coming forward. That doesn't mean, if there's any kind of a delay in construction, you won't see us augment that project, because we do that, when a project's delayed, costs increase through escalation. But it will prevent a situation from this, like this, from happening in the future.
So my request to you is, please don't come forward to us with the back of the envelope dollar amount again.
We absolutely won't. We will be using just a wide architects, and we'll be doing the design phase prior to doing a scope of work, prior to doing the construction dollars, prior to doing FABD. And we, we implemented that best practice with IVC's project, and it, it shows how good that works.
Thank you. Trustee, wait, wait for a second. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so I have two things now. Just to clarify, the $36 million is just for the stadium itself? Or is it that total package of all the other? You had mentioned that it was the quad and other things, and the field, like moving the athletic fields, is that the total cost of the project, or is it the stadium only?
You know, I'm, if you don't, I'm sorry that I don't have an exact answer for you right now. Before I came to the podium, I was thinking that was everything. That's the quad and the site improvements and the stadium. But I'm thinking in your, actually, in your facilities report that comes to you monthly, we put those numbers, and give me just a second, I'm gonna see if they're all together. The stadium's reading 18 million. The site improvements is reading 21, 525. It's separate numbers, and the 36 is specific to the stadium.
Okay, so, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, the, no, I'm still not lying in that part, but, the... And then, the, I'm still not lying in that part, but, the, uh, I'm good, I forgot what my second question was.
Okay. All right, any other, any other, uh, questions or comments? Someone want to move the item?
Uh, move approval?
Motion by Trustee Milchiker. Second by Trustee Jay. Any discussion? And only discussion I have is, is, I guess, for my, my part, what we're approving is the priorities at this point. We're not approving the costs or the budget for the projects, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We have one more, uh, question during discussion, Trustee Prendergast.
I, I remember my other question. So, when this first emerged, there was a big push for us to support any move by fundraising by the foundation. You mentioned, part of that was getting, you know, a plan together, uh, back-of-the-napkin or whatever, doesn't matter. It helps to have a vision to fundraise. Uh, we have then since approved funding for this project. Has that meant that the fundraising has stopped? Because, hey, they've got money now, we don't need to go out and work for this anymore? Or is this now an incentive for them to try and close that gap?
I would suggest Dr. Burnett may have the answer to that.
They are raising money, but nowhere near. Our foundations don't have the capacity to raise the millions and tens of millions that are required for this project, which they found out when they did go through that whole exercise. Uh, but they are continuing, and they have a goal of raising additional supplemental money for some supplemental things. In fact, I think they're looking at doing a nicer scoreboard or something like that. I think they're looking to raise half a million.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Milchiker, and a second by Trustee Jay, go ahead and cast your vote. Item is approved unanimous, trustee yes vote. One trustee absent, one student advisory, yes vote. Item six point four, mobile modular management corporation agreements.
Yes, what you have before you is, uh, ratifying a contract for a takeover agreement and for a lease agreement for five modular units to be used for IVC instruction. And it's, this is for a thirty-six month period, and these were units that were previously, um, uh, in, in an agreement with Kaplan International, um, who were occupying these mobile units on the IVC campus.
Sir, a motion to approve the item. Motion by Trustee Prendergast.
Second.
Second by Trustee Milchiker, and a question from Trustee Lang.
Yes, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons, I think you answered part of my question, which was that this is a existing program on the IVC campus. I'm assuming that that program got discontinued, and that's what's freeing up the space, uh, that they previously occupied, and, uh...
Yes, uh, Kaplan was a tenant, uh, used to be, uh, University of the Pacific, I think, something like that. And, uh, so for various reasons, we ended that contract with them, they're an auxiliary with us. Uh, so each of these modular units are on a well-manicured site. Everything is perfect and set up to move in some of our services as well as classrooms to occupy it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, got a motion in a second, please cast your vote. Uh, unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Item six point five, district-wide ADA transition plan consultant services. Motion by Trustee Lang. Second by Trustee Jay. Discussion, I have a question. So, um, this, um, item troubles me a little bit. I, uh, clearly in favor of having an ADA compliant, uh, community college district, uh, um, that's the law, and it's the right thing to do. My question is, uh, you probably can imagine, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons, based on our discussions today, is how did we get to this point? Why do we not have a plan in place already, given that the legislation passed, and was signed into law, I believe, in nineteen ninety? And then I also have concern about the cost of this. I, I think it's a extremely costly, um, const, you know, consultative services plan, because my understanding is it does not include retrofitting to make areas of the campuses compliant. This is simply recommendations the consultants are going to provide to the campuses. So, we do not know yet what the total cost of this, making our campuses ADA compliant is gonna be.
Right, that is correct. Um, we do not currently have ADA transition plans in place at the two colleges. What this will do, as a result of this contract being approved this evening, is to develop those plans with the two colleges, so that we do have, uh, we are compliant with Title, uh, Two and Title Four. And so, what we want to do is, um, the colleges will be working with these consultants. Plans will be developed, and they will basically be campus-wide ADA plans. It'll basically, um, be going in and touching every building and looking at every building to develop these plans. Now, what these plans are, are this not just, it developed one plan for this year, and it sits on a shelf. This is a multi-year plan. You cannot make the, uh, entire campus at each of the two colleges completely ADA compliant in one year. It looks at what makes the most sense, what are the high priorities that should be done first, and they, they both put them into like multi-year phases. And then you have to annually update the plans on a, a regular basis, and that'll give us a base to be able to do that, and be able to then make recommendations on, with basic aid monies, as well as to make sure that as we're running, renovating, um, buildings or constructing, um, buildings, that we are making sure that, uh, the plan is being followed and implemented. So, we have to really use the plans and implement it, and show good faith to make sure that, um, we are trying to make our best efforts. That's all that the law requires. As far as the dollar amounts, um, I will let Brandy sort of talk about our RFP process, and how that came in at the six hundred thousand dollar range. And anything else that she might want to add to my comments there?
Thank you.
Now, or, you want to go first?
Well, I'd like to, just real quick, I just wanted to make sure we bifurcate the conversation, that this is about a plan. But, um, I'll go ahead and speak for Todd, but, um, if I'm wrong, let me know, I, I don't think I am. Uh, both colleges are very cognizant of ADA, and, uh, we do assessments regularly, and do construction projects to, uh, do the best we can to be in compliance. And so, this is really about a requirement to, to have a long-range plan.
No one's doubting that. This plan should have been in place a long time ago. I mean, I don't think anyone can argue that. It's two thousand sixteen, the law passed in nineteen ninety, now we're here in two thousand sixteen, addressing this issue. I mean, this plan should have been in place a long time ago, and I'm gonna vote for it reluctantly, because I'm very supportive of making our campus ADA compliant. But I was, you know, extremely disappointed to see this on the agenda, um, for tonight's, uh, board meeting. Go ahead.
Okay, so your concern about the dollar value?
Both, well, both the dollar value, and then the timing of this coming up, both.
Yes, oh, I understand that, but I thought I would address the concern.
Go ahead and address the dollar value.
Thank you. We originally requested the board approve four hundred thousand dollars for the scope of work, thinking that that would be sufficient. We went out to bid, we received proposals, one or two, I can't remember, we considered those not appropriate because of the costs. And, um, had a couple meetings with legal. Legal came and advised us of the best approach for moving forward with this. We incorporated that advice into our next RF, um, request for qualifications and proposals. Uh, three proposals came in, they were all within, uh, the range that you see here, the six sixteen, this is actually the mid-range price. I believe the other one, numbers were six oh six and six twenty-four. Um, so, we're looking at the mid-range price, and this person offered the best technical services for us. So, we did, um, perform due diligence to get you best value, and it is costly, a costly service, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, and a second, go ahead and cast your vote. Item passes, unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Okay, item six point six, establishment of funding plan for STIRS and PERS rate increases. Is someone gonna address this item?
Sure, I'll start, and then, um, Kim McCord is here also to, um, augment anything that we need to augment from her perspective. Um, so, uh, this item is a little bit complicated. Um, we have, um, as you know, employee groups that, um, are either into one of two retirement systems, either STIRS or PERS. And, um, the state teachers retirement system, which is STIRS, did an actuary report to take a look at their long-term liabilities. And they had unfunded STIRS system liabilities, system-wide, to the tune of seventy-four billion dollars. Um, when they identified this liability, uh, recently, to address it, they had to, uh, make some recommendations regarding employer and employee rate changes. So, um, as an employee, um, uh, we're paying, uh, if you're in, or if you're a STIRS member, you're paying an employee rate that comes out of your personal paycheck. But also, the, um, employer, which is the district, also pays a percentage, it's a percentage of salary, okay? So, they increased on a schedule and got approved for that, and it's in state statute for rate increases over a time period. And these rate increases are quite dramatic, um, to address reducing the liability, okay, statewide. Um, each, each district in the state has a portion of the liability, and we have to actually reflect that on our financial statements, um, which then shows up as this negative number, um, which looks rather large for, um, various districts. So, that's what these rate increases are. Um, as far as PERS, PERS also raised their rates, but for different reasons. Um, the CalPERS Board, um, approved a change to how they amortize, um, and smoothing, uh, over of some of their liability rates. And so, basically, um, they changed it, and based on those assumptions, it ended up having an increased liability in which they had to raise their rates as well. So, they also raised their rates, not quite as dramatically as STIRS did, but it still was pretty significant. So, between the two, uh, pension, uh, plans, we were seeing, all districts across the state, K through twelve, as well as, um, committed colleges, were seeing large increases, um, for employee employer rates. Um, the state chancellor's office, um, as part of the SB three sixty-one recommendation, did, um, provide funding through SB three sixty-one for a small portion, uh, of the, uh, impact to each district for their rates. And as through the DRAC model, we, we mimic SB three sixty-one, so, um, the colleges and the district services have received some funding in base because of that, but not enough to address this. So, the recommend before, recommendation before you is to, um, fund it through, um, basic aid. Um, and it would, um, alleviate the, um, dramatic increases, um, impact, negative impact, to particularly the colleges' budgets. So, the recommendation before you, I think if you take a look at it, is that we're recommending that we establish an SOC CCD Pension Rate Stabilization Program Fund. And what we would do is, um, fund the known liability, the known liability for the district combined for PERS and STIRS rate increases for employer rates over a five-year period, because that's what we know right now, is thirty-nine point six million, which is pretty significant. Um, we recommend that we fund that by allocating dollars over three sums. Fourteen point five million in the current fiscal year, twelve point six million in fiscal year twenty sixteen-seventeen, and the remaining twelve point six million in fiscal year twenty seventeen-eighteen, for these unrestricted general fund position increases. Um, these amounts will be used when developing the various, um, budgets for those particular years. And, um, we have looked at this, um, both at fiscal team and at, um, and, and discussed it at various, um, venues to, uh, really, um, uh, make a recommendation that makes sense both for the colleges and for the board. And, um, we brought it to you for your discussion and approval this evening.
Thank you, do we have a motion?
Uh, so move.
Motion by Trustee Milchiker. Second by Trustee Jay. Discussion, we have, uh, Trustee Lang.
Yes, uh, so I, you know, I've spent a little bit of time, um, studying this item, and also talking with the district, uh, folks about, about it as well. I absolutely agree with the idea of addressing this issue and, uh, this liability, and addressing it now. One question I didn't ask is, do we know if this will now appear as a liability on our district financial statements, or not yet?
Could you reframe that question? I'm not quite sure if I understand what you're asking.
Okay, so, we know there's a future liability that we have, or actually, future, current liability to STIRS and PERS for this unfunded liability. Under the GASB rules, will that need to be recognized as a liability on our financial statements?
That's an accounting question.
Yeah, Kim, I'm gonna ask Kim, because I want to make sure that I answer it quite correctly, and it really is, I've heard do it instead of me.
Yeah, I should, I should have asked that in an earlier meeting.
I know it's in the notes, but I don't know if it's recognized as an actual liability.
Yeah, actually, our, um, audit this past year that we just, um, saw at the board in November, included for last fiscal year, the liability that we had to now book. So, this is our local amount that we're gonna be paying just for the next five years. That liability is really the thirty-year liability, our share of that. So, this, this will help mitigate it, it'll be an asset on our books when we set the money aside, it'll make our books overall look better. But this exact liability won't show up on our books. We have the statewide, our portion of the statewide liability already there.
Okay, gotcha, thank you very much, uh, for that. So, um, in, in any event, um, my, I guess my concern about the district's recommendation is twofold. One is the, the mechanism that we're using to fund it, and the second would be, um, the time period.
What do you mean, mechanism, basic, basic aid?
Over which we fund it, yes.
Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, so, I mean, it's only going to, at this point, probably, at least the amount that we're showing now, I think, has to come out of basic aid. I don't think there's any other source of those funds, quite frankly, uh, without pretty much devastating the college budgets, uh, seems to me. Uh, but, in any event, um, you know, the question is, what time period? Uh, I think some could argue for a shorter time period, maybe we ought to do it all at once. Uh, others would argue, maybe it should be a longer time period in order to not be as impactful on, uh, other basic aid projects that will be coming up, uh, you know, in the, in the near term, uh, that these dollars would otherwise be going towards. Uh, so that, that's the one concern, and I think at this point, I'm, um, okay with the district's recommendation to fund it over three years. Uh, the second issue, though, I think, is, uh, where do we, what do we do with these funds? Uh, I'm not terribly excited about establishing this as an additional county, uh, fund within the county. Uh, I would prefer, I guess, to maybe look at something like we've done with OPEB, and, um, establish a, you know, specific trust for this purpose, and then transfer funds from that trust, uh, to the college, or to the district, uh, to pay the STIRS liability when that comes due. I think that makes more sense to me, uh, and I'm, uh, I'm not excited about it just being a, um, a future liability that we, that we don't fund separately at all. So, that, that's kind of where I'm at with it. So, I'm not willing to accept the recommendation that you've made, um, in the form that it's made now, so I'd probably vote against that motion, uh, in favor of, again, establishing a separate trust fund for this. Uh, so, that, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Trustee?
Okay.
Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Sure, thank you. Um, we, as fiscal team, which consists of myself, Kim McCord, Carol Hilton, and Devita Chatrian, we, we really conferred about this. Um, we struggled because unlike the OPEB trust, which is a long-term liability that's being addressed, and long-term investments that are being done, and so risk is spread out over the long term as well. This is five-year. So, we're looking at, um, over a five-year period of time, the money will be, um, on, on a regular basis, uh, reimbursing basically the colleges for actual payroll expenses related to the increases to the STIRS and PERS rates. Um, so, we, it, we really mulled that over, what is the best, um, place to put it?
Yes, the trustees could use their discretion.
Right, yeah.
The trustees could use their discretion in terms of investment policy to make certain that the funds are available on a short-term basis.
You're exactly right, you're exactly right. So, um, so we did talk about that. The other thing is, we were, um, not, we're hesitant about paying investment advisors, um, during the five-year period. There, you do, there'd be a cost associated with managing the fund. We certainly can, um, can look into, explore the opportunity of doing a separate trust, what that would entail, and bring that information back to the board. what that would entail, and bring that information back to the board. So we could augment the recommendation to at least allow us to commit to the three-year investment of these funds. So we can plan, we have to plan basic aid accordingly, of course, as we go into the cycle with the commitment to bring back what we learned about being able to establish a trust and bring that back to the board for consideration.
Yeah, I think the other, only other point I didn't make is there aren't very many people here that were seated behind this podium when the county went through bankruptcy. So that, I must say, is an influencing factor. And now reading about the $150 million Civic Center project that they're about to undertake, just not real excited about that.
Point well taken.
Yeah. Trustee Prendergast.
If I can just piggyback on, I'm in agreement with Trustee Lang as far as if there's a possibility to do a trust, primarily because, for one, you're asking for money over a three-year period when in fact, the increases are over a five-year period, according to the STIRS site, anyway. I'm not sure about PERS. The increases are incremental. They're about 2% per year. So it's 2% the first year, then it's four, and then six. So it goes up another two each year. But it's, it ultimately culminates at 19%, 19.1. And then that rate stays until 2046. So that goes to, that speaks to more of a long-term look at this, in my mind. And not discounting the work you guys did. And I'm sure your meetings were very, very thorough. But I'm in tendency to agree with that concept and that, that that idea with that consideration in mind, especially because it says it's supposed to cease in 2046, which I don't buy. There's no way that they're going to say, oh, now you can go back to the old rate. And it is important to note that we are going back to the old rate. This is, the 19% is what the contribution was in the 90s before the recession, and they lowered it to make it easier on districts. So all the state is really doing is saying, hey, we got to get you back to where it was, because in the interim, we're now in the hole.
Right.
So I get all of this, but I really do, I really do think that that, I'm going to lean toward that same vote.
Trustee Milchiker.
I was wondering if it would be better to actually table this issue, to bring it back till next month? Or what would be the feeling of the rest of the board? What would happen if we could bring it back for next month? Would that be a possibility?
We were hoping to actually restate the recommendation, rather than table, if possible, for planning purposes. It's already February 22. And what's happening is, the cycle is starting for basic aid recommendations. And the recommendations from both District Technology Committee and KIC are due to the bar committee on March 15, which is before the next board meeting. It's pretty hard to recommend funding when we don't know what we're dealing with as far as dollar.
So are you going to amend the, are you offering to amend the item?
That would work also, actually.
I would just recommend, instead of saying, I would just recommend to the board, if they so choose to do so, instead of saying, and adopt a resolution to establish the Pension Fund Program Fund, just to authorize funding the known liability and not establish the fund yet.
I move an amendment.
Okay, yeah, I move that amendment.
Well, motion by Trustee Prendergast, second by Trustee Milchiker. I think we've had discussion, unless there's further discussion. Only thing, comment that I had is that, how will this impact other basic aid priorities? And I think it will. Inevitably.
I think you heard this evening, in context of the fiber construction plan, that there's a lot of projects and there are competing needs. We are looking at staggering projects so that there's design monies in a year than construction. And by looking at that and discussing it with the fiscal team, we felt they would be able to do a good portion of basic aid projects for facilities and technology, as well as be able to do this. This was a good year, because next year, it looked like there was a larger need coming forward.
But it's going to have an impact.
Of course it will. It's a zero-sum game, yes.
Trustee Prendergast.
So I guess that then goes to another point that I was trying to make. Since the increases are over five years, why jump in three? So you could make them smaller impacts to the basic aid funding over a five-year period, instead of doing a big lump in three.
Looking at project funding ahead in future years, there was some larger needs coming forward in some future years for capital improvement projects that we felt that these, these years would be better to do it, looking at timing.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I also support funding this over a shorter period of time, frankly, because I think we ought to absorb the impact sooner rather than later, quite frankly. And, you know, again, I would point out that, yes, it's going to impact ability to fund basic aid projects, but it is going to be a huge help to both colleges, basically, to fund it in this manner. Because otherwise, if we're looking at having to fund these, this, what I will call identified STIRS-PERS liability, you know, out of basically college budget monies, that's going to be a bigger problem, I think. So I think, I think we're better off taking the hit over a shorter period of time.
Okay.
I would just want to say that we did confer with the college presidents on this as well. And they did support this. I don't want to speak for them, but they did.
I would hope so. Do we need to restate the amendment, or?
I was just going to say a point of order. Does the maker of the original motion consider it a friendly amendment?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Then we don't have to vote on the amendment. We can vote on the direct item.
Okay.
Need a government teacher here. Oh, we have one.
All right. Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. The item carries. As amended. Okay. Item 6.7, Board Policy Revision, Except for Review and Study. Have a motion. Motion by Trustee Prendergast.
Second.
Second by Trustee Milchiker. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I just wanted to, I guess, note the changes that were being advocated for in Board Policies 2100 and 3200 that would delegate additional authority, basically, to execute contracts before board approval, moving them from the $100,000 to the $150,000 limits. I do have some concerns about that. I've had some discussion about that with Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons. I certainly understand the, that there are some compelling arguments for increasing those limits. And, you know, perhaps, you know, she may want to explain that to the other members of the board that, you know, haven't benefited from the conversations that we had. At the same time, I'm reluctant to cede additional board oversight from having those lower limits. So I think we need to have a good discussion of this before it comes back to the board for acceptance.
I agree with that. And I also had a discussion with Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons earlier this morning about this item. And I didn't really find a compelling argument in favor of delegating the additional authority here. I mean, I understand it conceptually. It didn't seem like there was a backlog that was occurring. But I, you know, I agree with Trustee Lang that this needs to be thought out pretty carefully. I know it's for review and study only tonight, but I don't. One question I think would be, or the one area I think could be helpful, Deborah, if you could address, is the difference between approval of a contract and ratification of a contract. Could you, because I found that very useful.
Yes, okay. So currently, the delegation of authority is as follows. Anything under $100,000, that's a contract. And that includes, it could be a $20,000 a year for five years, or it could be one contract for one year, one-time instance for $100,000. It doesn't matter. Anything under $100,000. The delegation of authority is that we basically review the contracts, work with legal on the contracts. And we have a lot of contract templates that we use. But we review and approve those. And then those are placed on the ratification of contracts, board item each month. And what that means is, those are executed prior to board approval, I mean, board ratification. And then you're ratifying those after the fact. That means, when you're ratifying something, that means the services under that contract are already taking place. Both parties have signed that agreement. So the district has signed it, as well as the other party. And it's not holding up business for the colleges to be able to do whatever it might be, repairs at the college facilities or software being purchased or whatever. When something is $100,000 or over, what we do is, we do the same review, the same diligence, but it's brought to the board for approval. So it doesn't matter whether it's $100,000 or it's $5 million Brandy Delaney contract that comes to the board as a separate board item. The colleges have, we did contract business process analysis and looked at our business processes. And one of the biggest complaints is, it takes too long to get something done. They can't wait, they basically have to wait for the services to be performed till after the board approves. So sometimes there's a delay of, it's a timing thing. And so some of the, we took a look at some of these contracts and said, okay, what makes the most sense? What should we do? We also didn't want to go crazy. But what would be a balanced approach to be able to be responsive to the college's needs, to be able to get work done in a timely manner to address things that are time-sensitive, but also, obviously, have the board take a look at things that they needed to take a look at? So that's where we came in at this recommendation. But of course, it's review and study. And it is something that we do want the board to take into consideration very seriously. And that's what this is about. That's why we bring the BPs to you, so that you have a chance to really confer. And also, we don't do them as just a straight approval. We do review and study one month, and we bring it back as an approval item the next. So this is exactly what we want you guys to do. Thank you.
So I just, I know, two more questions. Quick follow-up, you just raised something that I didn't discuss with you this morning. So suppose the contract is approved by the chancellor, the $150,000 contract, and then it comes before the board and it's not ratified. What happens in the vest center, because the contract has been approved and services are being provided?
Well, that's basically what you're authorizing, is your delegation, to allow us to execute the agreement, to be able to be executed on your behalf, and to allow those services or repairs or whatever to take place. That's what that delegation is.
So no, ratification becomes unnecessary, then?
Let the chancellor shake his head. Let me let him talk about this.
No, the ratification is necessary, because the approval can only be done by the board of trustees. So the board then is giving me, or Deborah, in this case, the authority to contract for something that's needed in a hurry and use our best judgment, that it's a good thing to do. But as of itself, it isn't good enough. For instance, when the bill goes to the county office to make payment, there's no record of a board approval of this expenditure, approval of the contract. That's the reason you do the ratification. You could choose to, yeah, and that'd be a mess at that point, yeah.
Would have to stop work, would have to stop work and address it. But understand, before it even goes on ratification list, before it's executed, there's a lot of diligence that takes place.
I'm not doubting that. I, my question is not doubting whether you're doing due diligence or whether, under certain circumstances, might be useful. I just didn't feel like, at this point, the case was made, albeit, I know you put forward a good case. I just didn't feel it was made in a way that, that I would vote in favor in the final, you know, presentation. But, Trustee Prendergast.
I guess first, we need a motion, and I'll do that.
We do. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Trustee Prendergast.
Seconded.
Second by Trustee Milchiker, Trustee Prendergast.
I'd like to speak to motion. So do we have a sense of how long ago it was put at $100,000? Do we know how long ago it was?
Gary knows, because it was right when he started. So how long ago was that, Gary?
It was in 2002. It wasn't exactly when I first started. But the reason this is even here is that prior to the current policy going into effect, the board had to approve all contracts, starting with $1. And that meant. Well, anything above $0, you're right, you're right. Everything above $0. And so that meant anything, any service that was done, any purchase that was done in the district, had to go to the board first. And that might, think of the holiday period, where you have a board meeting in the beginning of December, and you don't have another one till the end of January. All purchasing, contracting, and everything stopped. So it was just an awful situation to be in. So the purpose of the policy, when we first did it, was just to keep the business of the organization going. This is a huge organization, and you can't just hold it hostage for a year, a month and a half, or two months, while we're waiting for a board meeting. Now, the fiscal team, obviously, has found that more and more contracts are now larger due to inflation, I'm sure. And so what, what one time, $100,000 was good enough for no longer buys that same-time security. And so I'm sure they can live without it. But it's just that, how many activities don't occur?
So thank you for making my case for me, because that's exactly my point, was that you could make the argument that $150,000 is basically putting it at what it was when it was originally approved at 100. And it is important to note, anything under the 150, we still see it, it just shows up in the 5.0 consent calendar, instead of being on the 6.0. So it's not like it gets blown by. But, I mean, yeah, in an imperfect world, could somebody hang it up and say, I don't, I don't agree with this? I would eventually, I would hope that we have enough faith in the chancellor and the team to make an informed decision, that they wouldn't go out on a limb to create that scenario in eventuality. So I would vote yes for this.
I would want to add that we admitted to put this in there, and we could put this in the policy. This was never intended for things that dealt with land, for instance, real estate, even if it was under the 100 or 150. We bring those to the board. Those are things that we felt, there are certain categories of things that regardless of dollar amount, we feel the board needs to see as a separate item. And we'll continue to do that, regardless of this.
And I would put this under the same light as the guest speakers, right? We could say no to a guest speaker, but if they already spoke a month ago, what are we going to do about it? So it's in the same vein to me.
Not quite, but, okay, Trustee Lang.
I was actually hoping that Deborah would get into this, but since she isn't, I'm going to tread on this ground myself. You know, part of the, part of the reason that's being cited for this change is the fact that there's folks that are out there gaming the system right now. They're basically putting through smaller contracts for maybe shorter periods of time, just so that it doesn't have to go through trustee review, because it's a time-consuming process. In some respects, I'm offended by that, quite frankly. And I don't find that to be a very good reason for lowering the dollar limit of this thing. But it is one of the things that is happening. And it's unfortunate. So just to try and avoid, again, our oversight.
Thank you. So the motion is made in a second for accept and.
For review and study.
Review and study. Go ahead and cast your vote.
I'm supposed to, Grace has just reminded me that there's a wording change that was recommended by, I believe, Board President Jamal.
Okay.
This was in the cover memo of the item itself. There was a recommendation that, under action, what previously just said, review and study, for formatting purposes, that we want to say, except for, review and study. So we don't have that really stated there. And it might have been causing confusion in the past. So we wanted to introduce that new language to you this evening for future board items. And then, under the recommendation, that it says, accept the board policies for review and study.
Okay, so can I? It says it on our screen here. So this is, we're good, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Thanks for the clarification. We've got, let's see here, five trustee yes votes, five trustee no vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. 6.8 academic personnel items.
There's no changes.
Motion by trustee Prendergast, second by trustee Lang. Any discussion? Go ahead and cast your vote. Item carries, unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Item 6.9 classified personnel items.
No changes.
No approval.
Motion by trustee Milchekr.
Second.
Second by trustee Witt. Any discussion? Go ahead and cast your vote. Trustee Witt.
I'll try it again. Trustee Witt.
Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. Item 6.10, annual report on first-year probationary faculty recommended for continuation of tenure-track status.
This is the first of four items that we have every year on tenure process. There's a total of 97 faculty somewhere involved in the tenure process right now. Keep in mind that what you're seeing is 97 faculty, that means there's deans, there's also at least two faculty members in every committee. So this is a pretty large, ponderous process going through that. In the last contract negotiations, in the current new collective bargaining agreement, we really did a large amount of time tweaking the process to improve it, to make it even much better. So these committees are involved, to the extent that next year, starting in the fall, we'll actually have mentors involved with each tenure review committee that are not part of the formally evaluation process. So we really did a good job on that. But in the meantime, you'll see here, on the first year, you'll see there's a total of 18 faculty members that are under the status, that are coming to the board for their first contract. The next item will also have another one-year contract, and then the last, then you'll, excuse me, the second item will have a two-year contract, then the last item will be faculty coming before the Board of Trustees with the recommendation of approving their status as tenure-track faculty members to be fully tenured by the fall of this next year. So the board authorized them now to be tenured, and once they complete their year, they'll be actually tenured faculty by fall. So with that, we recommend that the board proceed and go through and vote appropriately.
Do I have a motion? Trustee Lang, I think I heard a second by trustee Milchekr. Discussion, trustee Lang.
Well, you had mentioned four. I only had three, and I noticed that I'm missing the third year.
The third year, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that in the process. It's 7.1.
I just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And so let me explain that, because I know you understand this, but let me, in case somebody doesn't. The tenure process is four years long. When we first hire a faculty member, we hire them for a one-year contract, they come back to the board, which is what you're voting on right now, for another one-year contract. And then you'll see that the, excuse me, then you'll see that we approve them for a two-year contract. Those people that are in a two-year contract, that is 7.1. So they do not ask, they get evaluated by the committee, but they do not get a recommendation for a contract because they're already in the middle of a contract.
Okay, forgotten.
Yes. My apologies for not explaining that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Got a motion in a second. Go ahead and cast your vote. Item carries, unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.11, second-year probationary faculty.
Yes, these faculty have gone through their second year, they're being recommended to the board for a two-year contract.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Motion by trustee Lang. Second by trustee Jay. Any discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Motion carries, unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.12, fourth-year probationary faculty recommended for tenure.
Yes, except for one of them. We have a very strange situation. We have an extraordinary tenure-track faculty member in his fourth year that we're asking the board not to approve, and that is, if you look on exhibit A, look down on Mike Ingles. I've never seen or heard of this in my career. Okay, but Mike Ingles is, he applied to become an interim dean, and so as a result, he will not be able to complete his entire year, or even 75% of an academic year, as a faculty member. The board at the last meeting approved him to become a dean effective January, so therefore, by law, he will only complete 50% as a faculty member, 50% as a dean. So therefore, you will, probably, if he goes back to faculty, he'll probably end up, you see him again next year. So this is kind of neat because of the fact that we're pulling him out because he's extraordinary good. So with that modification, if we could pull Michael Ingles from here, Michael knows about this, this is not news to him. So anyway, so we'd like to remove him from the list, but recommend approval of the rest.
Okay. Motion by trustee Lang.
Second.
Second by trustee Witt. Discussion, trustee Milchekr.
I just have a question on one other thing. I just noticed that one of the people that were approved for the second-year probationary faculty member are under the academic personnel list for resignations. So are you aware of that? Just I would bring that up.
There is somebody that...
A DSPS counselor for Saddleback College is under the, I just thought I would bring that up, although we went by that already.
Yes, thank you.
It seems kind of an extraordinary situation also.
Yes, we have a couple of those this year.
Okay, so we, okay, okay.
Okay.
I was just wondering whether Dr. Bugey would like to further, David would like to comment on that.
Dr. Bugey, would you like to comment? You had some facial gestures, but...
We did, yes. I'm just appreciative of trustee Milchekr pointing that out.
Okay.
But you still want us to move forward with the approval?
For me to pull somebody off this list, I better go back and double-check, because this is a major issue, and this is a contract, and we need to consider it at this meeting because March 15th is sitting there. If they resign, though, the resignation would take priority over any future employment. And the board's already approved that. If this is exactly the same person in the same area.
Yeah, I didn't want to mention the name, I just mentioned the position.
Yes. So whether the board approves the contract or not, the resignation would take priority over any future employment from that point forward.
Thank you.
Well, we have a motion, and we have a second. Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Okay, moving on to reports.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Knowing that Kathy Schmider is going to go on forever, I make a motion that we go, extend the meeting to 9:15.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seeing that we have a second, go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and one student advisory yes vote. So I guess I haven't lived up to my pledge this evening, trustee Prendergast.
Well, you haven't, you haven't yet.
All right. Item 7.1, reports, annual report on third-year probationary faculty. Any changes or...
No, that's the class for next year, and they'll be coming to the board next year as recommendation for full tenure, provided that they meet all the criteria of the tenure review committees.
Okay.
Under presidents.
7.2, just lost my page here. Got it back. Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College speakers. Any questions on that? 7.3, basic aid report.
I would like to point out that this is our monthly basic aid report. However, this time of year, we do go through a review and close out basic aid projects that are old, and funds a return to the basic aid pot. This begins the sort of cycle for basic aid. So you'll see that there are 14 projects that were closed out totaling $11.9 million returned to basic aid, and are listed on page three of the report.
Okay, thank you. 7.4, monthly financial status report.
No changes.
No changes. 7.5, facilities plan status report.
No changes.
7.6, retiree OPEB trust fund. Reports from administration and governance groups. You've waited patiently. Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Thank you, President Jamal, members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Portner. It's been a month of Fibonacci spiral increase in the number of meetings, I've noticed that. We're in the sixth week of instruction already, how could that have happened? I want to thank Captain Higa and Lieutenant Beckler for presenting to the Academic Senate on issues of campus safety, active shooter, those kind of things. They're now presenting to us on a monthly basis, which is one of the ways that we get information about those kinds of issues out to the faculty, and then out to the students eventually. I also want to give you an example of how students get this information. When I teach in this classroom, the very first day of class, we talk about run, hide, fight. Hide is actually behind your desks there. There would be about 110 of us hiding behind the desks if we do that. So that's one way that the students get the information, is from their faculty, their professors, typically first day of class. Let's see, the Senate is moving forward to vote on the Saddleback College Enrollment Management Plan, that's coming Wednesday at the Senate. Exciting step forward. The statewide Academic Senate Spring Plenary is coming April 21st in Sacramento. Bryce Harris will be one of the keynote speakers at that. I think that's it for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You mentioned Bryce. Have they named a successor yet to him?
I haven't heard yet. I don't think so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Faculty Association.
Good evening, Claire Cesario, Faculty Association President. So this weekend, we had the Community College Association meetings, our winter meetings. And we are also looking at a lot of the legislation that's coming through. One of the things that we're definitely doing is collecting signatures for the extension of the Prop 30 income tax portion rates. One of the assembly, the bills that went to the Assembly Committee for Higher Education that we're particularly interested in is AB 1690, introduced by Assembly Member Medina. This bill seeks to improve student success and retention by providing a more stable part-time faculty workforce through the establishment of minimum standards and ed code related to such things as part-time evaluation procedures and seniority rights. Part-time seniority rights was something that we attempted to get into our most recent faculty contract without success. So part-time faculty continue to be hired on a semester-by-semester basis without due process, even if they have been successfully working in the district for a long period of time, and successfully instructing our students. Studies show that a successful, that a stable faculty workforce is imperative for student success and retention. So we encourage the board to support this bill, and to communicate that support to the Community College League, to Assembly Member Medina's office, and the Assembly Committee on Higher Education. We have a resolution that, if you'd like, we'll give you the wording to, and you could approve it and forward that on. So, thank you.
Thank you. IBC Academic Senate.
Hi, Kathy Schmider, IBC Academic Senate President. I'd like to thank TJ for joining a contingent from IBC to go to a meeting in San Antonio. He was a fantastic team member, and from what I could tell, he was the paramount board member at this meeting. Each college that participated brought a board member, and he was the one whose name everyone knew by the end of the meeting because of his just stellar participation, both in our team and in the meeting as a whole. And, and he gave me beads. You did give everybody beads, but I'm the one wearing them, aren't I? What happens in San Antonio stays in San Antonio.
It's getting better, I think we need to extend it longer.
Our faculty continue to do all of the things that we expect faculty to do, including having conversations about innovative programs and innovative initiatives up at IBC. When they've incubated long enough to bring them out and talk about them in public, we shall do so, but at the moment, we're incubating them. Think chickens. And I don't have anything else good to say, so I'm going to stop now.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor, Human Resources.
The big item in Human Resources right now is faculty recruitment. So we were out there, we just recently came back from the Los Angeles Job Fair, where we had a large number of additional faculty. We've had some big years. North Orange this year is recruiting 87 full-time faculty positions, and so the job market is extremely intense. We were aided this year a great deal in Los Angeles by a large number of deans that came out, the best recruiters for faculty or other faculty. Then next on the list are the deans. So when the deans show up and faculties show up, we end up having a lot of interest in jobs. So we hope to actually have decent pools this year. They will not be as big as previous years, you've already experienced that, but if we sit there and if we move quickly, you'll see the faculty positions on the March and April board agenda items will be in the first draw for them. So we're excited about that, and so that's our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor, Business Services.
No report this evening.
Great, thank you. IBC Classified Senate.
Hi, Karen Martin, IBC Classified Senate. Right now, we just got our series, our Learning Lunch series up and running. We have about two workshops a month. The very first workshop was focused on Google Docs. We had a great turnout. We had a computer room available, so it was hands-on, and everybody could work on a document of interest while being guided by the facilitator, who is a classified staff member. Our next Learning Lunch workshop is actually this Friday, and it's focused on concentrating on stress management, so we're excited about that. And the next thing, the other big thing on our list is, it is IBC's turn to organize the Classified Staff Development Day. So we have a great working committee composed of classified staff from both, from all three locations, IBC, Saddleback, and the district. And we've identified a great venue. We're going to be at Newport Dunes this year on March 23rd, which is a Wednesday, from 9:00 to 4:00. We're working with a great event planner who has that location, and for anybody concerned as we are, that El Nino will actually appear in the form of rain this year. They will have a tent available in case we need to access an indoor location, and it's just, it's right there in the same location, so we'll still be able to move and make that last-minute change, even if it's like 7:00, 6:00, or 7:00 in the morning. So, and I just asked Dr. Bugey, our committee would love for him to present Leadership Skills by Attila the Hun. So he will be doing that presentation, and then we'll have several team-building workshops available throughout the day to bring everybody together. So we're really excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. CSEA President.
Thank you, Mr. President, Scott Ferguson-Green, President, Chapter 586. Earlier this month, on February 9th, we lost one of our own. Her name was Lisa Austin, and she was very active as a CSEA member. She was also active in Saddleback College Classified Senate. She served on a lot of committees. She volunteered her own time in a lot of ways for CSEA. She served on our executive board, last serving when I first became a member of the executive board as first vice president. And so CSEA wishes to extend their condolences to her husband Eric and her entire family. If you got a chance to know Lisa, you got a chance to know a really good soul, and so we're really going to miss her. This Sunday is the Academy Awards, and I just wanted to mention that there are three students who have worked on Oscar-nominated movies. They went through the cinema, TV, and radio program. David Halagarta, he actually worked on two movies that were Oscar-nominated this Sunday. And also, it included a student named Navid Nagaban, who actually, he co-starred in the Oscar-nominated film short, Day One. So we have former Saddleback students who are going to be part of this Sunday's Oscars. They're going to be either present, or, you know, they have worked on projects that are going... that are going to be mentioned this Sunday. So we're very proud of that.
That's great. Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I am Paul Bonkowski. I'm new to the Classified Senate as the president.
Congratulations.
And I have nothing to report. However, I would like to publicly thank and acknowledge two people who are very important to me being here today. One of them is Mike Soder, who's not here this evening. However, he's done an excellent job of continuing to take the helm when I was out on injury and do appreciate his hard work and diligence at Classified Senate, Saddleback College. And the other person I'd like to publicly thank is Dr. Todd Burnett. Without his encouragement and support of Classified Senate and of me personally, I probably most likely would not be here this evening. So I thank both of those gentlemen.
Thank you. So tonight, we adjourn our meeting in memory of Dr. Juan Francisco Lara, who passed away on February 4th. Dr. Lara was retired vice chancellor at the University of California, Irvine, and chairman of the Orange County Hispanic Education Endowment Fund. He provided inspiration for thousands of Orange County students, many of them from South Orange County Community College District. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, friends, and colleagues. We also mourn the loss, as was just mentioned by Scott Green of Lisa Austin, Senior Administrative Assistant in the Health Sciences and Human Services Division, who passed away on February 9th. Lisa was an employee of Saddleback College for over 20 years. She started her career at the college as a male clerk and later worked in health sciences as a program specialist and senior administrative assistant. Her dedicated career at Saddleback followed in the footsteps of her mother and mother-in-law, both of whom retired from the South Orange County Community College District. Her husband, Eric, is a longtime employee of the district, having worked in the warehouse since 1990. Our thoughts and prayers go out to all of her family, friends, and colleagues. Good night, everybody.